Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Ms. Bydlman will have our prayer for this morning.
Dear Lord, as we come to you this morning, we thank you for all things and we give special thanks to you for this Lenten season that we're starting and we continue to pray for our Commissioners and their staff and we know that we heard the news about Bendix and we're still prayerful that those things can work out and we just pray that you will just show the Commissioners and their staff how to bring new companies to Lorraine County and we just continue to pray that we'll work together as a county for the betterment of Lorraine County, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen, thank you. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the February 25th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Lundey has our dog from the kennel this morning, but our microphone is not working, so you're gonna have to bear with us, is it working?
Yeah, battery's low.
Oh, okay. This is his first dog. First dog, yeah.
Okay. Dog this week's in the kennel, this is a four-year-old male Shih Tzu and this guy was found somewhere along Seven Street here in Elyria. He's been crying ever since he got here.
Yeah.
So he definitely wants a home and, how many dogs do we have now? Nine.
Oh, wow.
I know kennels need a good home, this one I think would be a real good one for ya. So, it's called Kennel. Kennel number five, it's ready on Friday. Okay, Kennel number five for this guy and will be ready by Friday.
Well, Tim, that's gotta be a record low for us, nine?
It's quiet.
Wow, that's amazing, thank you to all those people out there that are coming to our kennel instead of buying a dog and adopting a dog, taking it, helping us out a lot, thank you so much for that. Madam Clerk?
At 9:45 we'll have a public hearing on the first CDBG of Y-15, under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner, I do have a few personnel issues, some potential hires at Job and Family Services. Interestingly, I don't see anything from Golden Acres on the revolving door with Nurses Aids there, but I'll have to look through my folder a little further. I also want to update you on ongoing litigation, pending litigation, and a potential sale and purchase of real estate. All those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions and at the end of the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into executive session, we talk about those items that I've outlined, thank you.
Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading of the minutes of February 11th and 18th?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Under community development, approve and enter an agreement with Neighborhood Alliance in the amount of $40,000 for Meals on Wheels program, effective retroactive to January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2015, and will be paid on the contract services account.
So moved.
Second.
Actually, I have a question on this, Don, was this dollars that were not expended from another organization, additional allocation, or just this next quarter of funding? We've had a lot of issues over the years with the Meals on Wheels and where it's going to and who's performing the services, Southern Lorraine County and such.
They are covering for us all of the unincorporated areas as well as, and this is our annual appropriation to them.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we've had a relationship with them on Meals on Wheels for a long time. One of the things we did, though, we used to have two contracts for Meals on Wheels.
Correct.
And it was felt it was more efficient to have only one vendor doing it, so we get economy of cost, so we haven't done the Lorraine seniors for a while.
Right, to do all.
Because it had two programs and it just didn't make sense.
I was gonna ask about that, they have their own program with Meals on Wheels for Office on Aging, right?
They, they used to, we used to fund some, I don't know what they presently do, but the limited amount of dollars we had, it was really hard to support two operations, basically trying to cover the same area.
Well, I had some conversations, because I had a gentleman who needed some assistance and Office on Aging did have a Meals on Wheels program as of like a month ago, so I don't know where their funding's coming from.
They did, they actually had applied as well and they went with a restaurant voucher program this time around.
They were using places like Blue Sky and a few of them on the vouchers. We did look at the price on this a couple times and it's fairly competitive for the nationwide average.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
Any clarification on that?
No problem, thank you.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Under Sanitary Engineer, approve Third Amendment to the Service Agreement Number 3162 with Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District providing for the inclusion of Columbia Township. This will provide sanitary sewers to facilitate the residential development between Redfern, Snell, and East River Roads.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cortez?
You wanna do this, Tim?
Yeah, sure. The, when we bring the sewer down Redford Road and we're gonna bring it all the way down to the Redford Farm subdivision, there's some parcels of land that lie along the northern side of the road that fall into Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District's facilities planning area. We've asked to sewer those homes and bring them on to Lorraine County's system because it makes, you know, sense to do so as we're putting the sewer in. Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer has no problem with that because we're sending the flow to Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer. The only difference is there'll be our customers and then we'll build them and then we send it up to Northeast Ohio Regional. These folks will also be getting, in essence, free sewers because we've negotiated with the developer that to waiver tap fees and connection fees and there's not gonna be no assessments on the sewer coming down.
No tap fees either?
No developer tap fees. There may be a county tap fee that we still, because we have inspections on laterals and things to do, but at the end of the day, they're not gonna be paying for the, have a developer develop property. We've seen that before where residents become very upset that, in essence, they end up paying for a sewer so somebody can make a lot of money down the road, so we've negotiated on the, for the benefit of those homeowners. But we have to make this change to the facilities planning area and my understanding is no act of supportive of this change, there's no, it's not being contested by Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer, so we should move forward with this.
Because they will earn income on the flow, right?
Well, we send in the flow to them, they're not really, they're still technically gonna be customers in Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer except we take care of the sewer alliance.
Right, we oughta wish the other entity in the unincorporated would be as cooperative as Neosord is.
What other entity would you be talking about?
It might be Lorco, might agree to have flow agreements as what we've requested. My question being with this, though, before you get to that part, in regards to our stormwater district, Neosord has a certain area, this part, does this stay in the Lorraine County Stormwater District while it's in the Neosord Sewer District, or will these residents be part of the Neosord Stormwater District? Because that's still in litigation.
Right, well, you just, you just ask something that's gonna be like an hour and a half, two-hour conversation.
I got a short meeting. I got time.
I see we have a very robust agenda this morning. The, you know, that litigation's still winding its way through and then I generally have a thinking that no matter which side prevails, there's gonna be appeals that are gonna take a number of years because neither one of them is going to give an inch on this. The situation for us, though, is that Columbia Township lies in a watershed that would bring them into the stormwater area of Northeast Ohio Regional. I really wish we could negotiate Columbia Township out of that, bring them into ours. First of all, the fees that we charge are hugely lower than the ones that Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer does and secondly, we have a lot of cooperative workings going on there and I feel that we could, we could deal with the issues more fully with Columbia Township.
Well, we do have portions of Columbia Township that have stayed within our FBA, but only, or a small piece, but the rest is going with Neosord based on these sewer agreements.
I had hoped that we could negotiate with Neosord with regard to the stormwater, but then all that litigation started. So right now, actually, whip, council, we're charging them our fee until this is resolved and we're doing work in Columbia Township.
Right, right. It's actually that most of Columbia Township is in our district. There's that northeast quadrant that is primarily in Neosord.
And that's where we're putting these sewers up.
And I'm sure they will take the position that everybody's soup that goes into their sewers will be part of their system also for stormwater, so I'm sure that's the position they will take.
You know, once they finish all their litigation over there, because we're not involved in the litigation, then we could have, hopefully have some constructive discussion about how to lower the fees and maybe deal with it ourselves, but we can't, we can't get involved until all that litigation ends. You real, as I explained to a couple of you, there's a developer on the other side of Columbia Township that lies in Strongsville that wants to put in a subdivision and it would be better served going to our Marks Road Sewer, but Strongsville is adamant that we can't own the sewers and we're adamant that they're not gonna tap the capacity of the Marks Road Sewer that we installed without us owning the sewers there, since it's right across, right, butts right up to Columbia Township there. And the issue there is because of all those litigations that we worked through in the early 2000s with regard to annexation up in that area. That was resolved by allowing higher density housing to go in along the border there, but we also had to expand that Marks Road Sewer in that area. So, we're gonna be, we're gonna be pretty strong with Strongsville and insist upon owning those sewers or the developer's gonna have to put his own pumping stations in and pump uphill into Strongsville, they just are not cooperative.
Since all this happened prior to Mr. Lundey coming here, I don't know if you've been in Mr. Cortez's office, he's got all the maps outlining all these projects and it helps to get a visual, so I would encourage you to take, I looked at him yesterday.
What did you think they were before I went over to which?
Decorations.
(laughing) I said, no, I was flipping over, going through all the sewer shots.
Yeah, it's easier, it's better when you get a visual and just talking about it, seeing exactly where everything is.
Well, and also, I'm going to be meeting, Jerry and I are going to be meeting with Columbia Township trustees, talking about some additional service areas up there, I understand they're enthusiastic, so I'm really looking forward to sitting down with them and talking about some controlled development because Columbia Township is really, really growing fast. I would say it rivals North Ridgeville right now as the fastest-growing community with housing starts and that's gonna continue, so good land planning and developing where we're gonna take these sewers in the future is essential to Columbia Township becoming a very, very premier community. It's nice to see a township growing like that and so they, they have some problems that are gonna come along with that, though, so we're gonna work with them and so that meeting will be taking place soon.
Thank you.
Commissioner, if I just might add, the original court decision that was made in common, police corps upheld the fees, but they put an order on, because under the original Neosord plan, 7% of their fees was gonna come back to the locality and I'm not sure if that meant Columbia Township or the county, but the court order that came from the common police corps upped that to over 20%.
As it should be.
So, actually, just that percentage of their fee gets to Lorraine County more, as much or more than we get, we get out of our stormwater treaty, so.
And as you know, we'll be working on that issue this evening with the trustees.
Yeah, it should be an interesting meeting this evening.
I'm looking forward to it, I think it's, I think it's gonna be a good, a good conversation tonight.
Good.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
Well, since we've had such a lengthy agenda.
Yeah.
Can you keep it short?
Yeah.
Keep it short, so we can, we do have a number of issues for executive session, I really don't have any additional reports this morning, so I'll yield to council.
Mr. Enos?
So I just have one matter of pending litigation to discuss in executive session.
Commissioner's report.
I don't see Brad Dickens from The Chronicle here today, it was in the paper that he's been nominated for the best news writer, so congratulations to him, hopefully he wins that award. The three of us all attended the State of the City for the City of Lorraine last week and it was a nice turnout, great turnout, probably the biggest I've seen ever. Chase Rittenhour, Mayor Rittenhour did a nice job in talking about what's going on in his city and what he plans to do in the future. Monday, I had my goodwill board meeting and I'm happy to report that, I'm hoping in April that we're gonna do a donation drive at our collection center. People are getting rid of things in the, in springtime, cleaning out their closets, so it'd be a nice time to get rid of all of their recyclables and also make a donation to goodwill, so more will be coming on that issue when we get all those items ironed out, so. And then this evening, we'll be talking about stormwater with the township trustees, so looking forward to that. End of my report.
Yeah, busy week, Mayor Rittenhour did a fine job. I was in Columbus on Friday for County Commissioners Association, I saw a round Justin Public Safety Committee meeting. Our main discussions were, as I'll bring it back up again, indigent defense, we've been working on this for seven or eight years, we've got the reimbursement up to 40%, whereas once at 23, so they're gonna hold that, we were asking it to 50, but Amy Boer from the Ohio Public Defender's Office joined us and they have proposed legislation that is currently not moving very quickly, as our state house is known to do, but taking county reimbursements up to 50% immediately, it takes about a $12 million allocation just to get it up there, but then leveling out the playing field across the state for indigent fees to attorneys raising it all to $50 an hour, making it constant. Some counties pay $25 an hour, some pay 65 an hour, so trying to get that uneven keel because they're having issues getting indigent defense around the state because who's gonna work for 25 or 30 bucks an hour? I know we raised ours a couple years ago, but it's still not enough to offset the cost, so again, we're asking for an additional $12 million per year. Contentious subject came up in our committee meeting, and the indigent defense actually will be moving to the full board of the CCA or the committee, but there was a discussion, former county commissioner Steve Hambley from Abudding, Medina County, who has taken over for Mr. Batchelder, has introduced legislation to give permissive authority to county commissioners or multi-counties to privatize our county jails. It's gonna be opposed by the Buckeye State Sheriff's Association, but it got a consensus to send it to the board for discussion, I was not part of that consensus. And we also had discussions about, Dan Ramos, a co-sponsor of House Bill 47, there's an issue, you know how they're doing the beer festivals and wine festivals outside between streets and alleys? Well, actually, even though you get the permit from the state of Ohio to do that, you're actually breaking the open container law in most communities, so they're trying to clean that up and Dan Ramos is one of the co-sponsors on that and that got full support to move to the board. Also, major issues in regards to the city of Toledo and Lucas County, which has always been our issue, in regards to state code versus local codes and housing of prisoners. The mayor who just passed away in Toledo, former police officer, instructed all of their police officers to charge everything under the state code, they were gonna quit paying Lucas County Jail for any services, it was a $9 million shortfall. Currently, it doesn't look like there'll be any action taken on this.
Why don't we explain the difference here with regard to jail services, how they're paid for when there's municipalities located within your community? There's two ways that this happens, there's municipal codes that a suspect can be charged under, if they're charged under a municipal code, the cost of housing them whether they be in the municipal jail or in a county jail, or any other facility, because you can transport them to different counties, they're not required to go to that county facility, are paid for by the municipality under which the charges were brought up under. If they charge them under state statutes, under state law, that cost is automatically borne by the county and the county becomes responsible for paying the housing charges on those suspects. You know, it's been a back and forth over the years, there's, some municipalities run jails and they run them very, very profitably by charging under municipal ordinances, some have not been able to run them profitably and therefore they charge them under state orders and they send them over to us, because if they charge them under municipal orders, they get to keep all the court fees, any fees that are attached to the defendants when they're adjudicated and it could be quite profitable for that municipality. Right now, Lorraine has a mixed bag of what they do because their jail is still open.
Well, they're facility.
Elyria has, you know, and because of various issues, was unable to keep the jail open, so they're charging under state statutes so that they, they go to our lockup and we pay the cost there. So, you know, for the, for the public out there, it may not understand the difference between those things, then of course, once a defendant is completely adjudicated and sentenced, they go to OJO and then they're, they're sent off to the, to the state and they become a cost to the state for incarceration.
There was a lot of discussion as that went, though, to handle the funding for the counties, also, the rule with the Medicaid is the minute you are incarcerated, you lose your Medicaid.
Well, you know that.
And then it goes through the entire process, we medicate these guys, get them back on their medications, because we're basically a mental health facility also, then they come out, it takes them a couple weeks to get back on Medicaid, so they have no drugs whatsoever, no medication whatsoever.
Yeah, trans.
We can't change that part, but we're asking the state, their 40% that they contribute to the Medicaid, to come back and help us pay for these things and then short-gap that time until they get back on the Medicaid system so they don't fall off of their meds and then are brought back in our county jail.
You know, the transitional care exiting.
You say it so eloquently.
Well, you know, which transitional care has become an issue, working on recidivism has become an issue, the mental health, there's more than enough data out there to support that a great deal of the population has some mental health issues that need to be dealt with and are required to be dealt with. Sheriff does a really good job of providing those services in the jail. Healthcare has become a big one, it can be very, very costly, we've worked on various strategies to lower those costs over time, but, but it's still, it's still a big issue. And of course, you're right, even, even if they're Medicaid eligible, as soon as they come into the jail, under the Secondary Payer Act, we become the primary payer for their healthcare services. Now, you know, rest assured, they're not getting discretionary, you know, discretionary care out there, they're getting whatever mandatory care that they require to, to keep them from becoming further problems, but, but it's still costly and then of course, they, they used to transport them a lot, but now the sheriff has services in the jail, he's done a real good job with that. But, Ted, it's gonna require a lot more, it's gonna require, you know, figuring how to get these inmates either adjudicated quicker, move through the process quicker, I was reading some stuff and we're gonna see, I have an webinar today at 12:30 to look at this, because the longer they stay with us, because of continued legal maneuvering and delays, the more costly they become for us, we need to get them out of the jail, adjudicated and move to the next level, if there is a next level, as quickly as possible, and I'm not suggesting our courts aren't doing that or our prosecutors not doing that, I believe that they understand that, but, but, you know, the, the cost of housing goes up exponentially the longer an inmate stays uncompletely adjudicated through the system. So hopefully, we'll see some things today, there's grant money out there to.
$75 million, I think I saw.
75 million and, and, but, I'm just getting information today, this could be something that, we really don't have a lot to do with, it may require prosecutors, courts, and the jail operators to, to, to involve themselves in this, but I want to get an idea of what the grants would require. I mention it because this is a planning grant right now, it doesn't require you to do anything, it's, it's just a planning and a process, looking at your processes and I think we were foolhardy, we didn't at least sit through that, see we couldn't get some money to, to look at what we're doing in a planning stage, so we'll have more to talk about on that, coming up.
All right, yeah, all right, now is that through federal government, that webinar today, or is that a state?
Naco, I think, isn't it, Naco?
Is it Naco?
I think it's Naco.
Okay, all right, then, good, thank you, end of my report.
Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam President, first off, disappointed to hear the news about Bendix leaving Elyria, I think it's important for people to know that every effort possible was made to retain them in Elyria, and I certainly hope we can still maybe come up with a strategy to at least try to keep them in the county.
You know, we've partnered with a couple of the communities.
Right.
That, that have made additional overtures, to be clear, they weren't fishing in Elyria's pond, Bendix had, had reached out past Elyria a little bit, so we've been working with those communities as well as Elyria and we did let the mayor in Elyria know early on that, you know, we were giving multiple assistance out there in the community, so we are doing that, Commissioner.
Yeah, and I know, having been involved in a lot of economic development, also with the city of Elyria and with the state, that these are, they're very complex issues, they're not as easy as they look on the surface, you know, even when you're trying to bring a business in, you know, the building's gotta be the right size, the ceiling's gotta be the right height, so you can have cranes, you gotta have access to rail, you know, all those different things that, that come into play, so economic development issues or packages are not as easy as they may look on the surface, but still hoping we can find a way to make that work for the company, but I just wanted folks to know, every effort was made to, to retain them in Elyria. Attended Mayor Chase Rittenhour's State of the City address and I may have said before, I had a chance to go actually door-to-door with the mayor there last year and, and the response and the positive feedback, the mayor Rittenhour is just overwhelmingly positive and doing, doing a great job over there. Had a chance to attend the NAACP dinner over the weekend, which recognized Ricky Smith and all the great work he's been doing to, to help individuals turn around their lives and their battle with alcohol and drugs, want to thank President Gene Rice for putting on a nice program there. Also, I had the opportunity to listen on the radio for a while and then once I got home, watch on TV, the governor's State of the State address, I've sat through a, a number of those and, you know, I just think it's important for the public to know that yes, the budget was balanced, I was there when we balanced that budget, but that budget was balanced on the back of local government and schools and all you have to do is look at the numbers for Lorraine County, past four years, $48 million lost to this county, $14 million to our schools, 34 to local government and, you know, quite candidly, I could look like a financial genius if I used all your banking accounts and checking accounts to pay my bills and have a big surplus in my account, so. So, you gotta drill down and look at the facts, you know, I think the time has come with the state having a surplus that, quite frankly, we need our money back, you know, we still have issues that we have to resolve here and, you know, we have a serious heroin epidemic that's taking place in this county and all across the state, things like that that need to be addressed, we have, you know, people are having a tough time holding on to their homes, getting to work through transit, all kinds of different areas that we need help with, so it's good to have the surplus, we need our money back. The concern is about the tax shift taking place down there in Columbus, when you're asking individuals to pay a lot more for sales tax, then there's the tax break on the other end, which really is benefiting wealthier Ohioans, not really helping the middle-class Ohioans very much, so, and the reality, we see it every single day, we saw it in the paper the other day when the mayor was speaking with council in Elyria, you know, they're looking at cutting 50 employees and the police chief, Whiteley, is saying he's not gonna be able to buy any new patrol cars, so it's hard to convince me that things are good at the local level and all that money should be staying down there in Columbus, it needs to come back to our communities. Also, would encourage you to attend our next transit meeting, which will take place, we need to get people to work, get them to their doctor's appointments, and have a viable system, but that will require all of us working together to get there, March 5th, here on the 4th floor, from 6:00 PM until 8:00 PM, that's my report.
Board correspondents.
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow?
Aye.
Linda Blanchett, the first CDBG FY15 hearing.
As a requirement for applying for any of the CDBG grants, you must have, the county must have, two public hearings. This is the first public hearing. Lorraine County is eligible to apply for funds under program year. The state has changed. It used to be fiscal year. We now say PY. We've finally caught up to program years. This is for 2015 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Small Cities Program, which is a federally funded program as well as other programs related that are administered by the State of Ohio Development Services Agency. Lorraine County may apply for PY 2015 funding under the Small Cities Community Development Allocation Program. This also includes the competitive neighborhood revitalization, downtown revitalization, and critical infrastructure programs, water and sewer, economic development, discretionary and imminent threat grants. Lorraine County is not eligible this year to apply for the Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, CHIP, because we have a grant this year. With our partners of Oberlin and Sheffield Lake, we were awarded $1,238,225 for this grant, and we're currently administering that. Lorraine County is eligible for approximately $276,000 for the program year PY 2015 Community Development Program.
Excuse me, Linda, does that include North Ridgeville also now?
Yes, this is the last year that we are mandated to provide funding to North Ridgeville during this grant.
In the past, they had their own, and then it got shifted over to us, that we had to do a divvy-up now with less dollars.
Correct.
Well, is North Ridgeville going to go direct again?
They won't go direct. They'll apply through us, as does the rest of the county.
So, you know, for people out there, again, you know, sometimes we have to explain things.
The rules.
We have two entitlement cities, Lorraine and Lorraine, that are entitlements, so we don't work in those jurisdictions. North Ridgeville wasn't an entitlement city, but it was direct before. Now, if they have to apply through us, what does that really mean?
Would it be part of our funding, or would they have a separate line item? It would be North Ridgeville applicable.
No, that's what we do currently. They get their own line item, and we have to give them funding. They will... I have just sent out funding requests to all of Lorraine County, except for the entitlement cities. Funding request applications. I'm looking for projects. The city of North Ridgeville will have to apply, as does the rest of the county, for funds, so it's more competitive for them.
For them with... So they just... So we don't have a set aside for them, but they're still going to be in the same funding pool as they are really right now, right?
Correct.
I see Don heading up behind you, so... Sorry, I don't mean to...
It's been confusing the last couple of years. That's why I'm asking for clarification.
Excuse me, and thank you, Linda. This will be the last year where we'll actually have to provide North Ridgeville money for a project they designate. Going forward, after this last cycle, then they will be in the same pot with everyone else. They will not get special consideration for a project. They'll have to compete with the Oberlins and Shefields, et cetera, for a project.
So we're still not... We're still going to have the responsibility for them, but it's not mandatory they get money.
Correct.
Although they are the third-largest city, so the reality of the situation is they're still going to be in a smaller pool, and the pool would have been bigger when they were direct, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so let me ask you, do we have the ability to request additional CDBG money because we're taking on North Ridgeville? Didn't we have an issue with Amherst? Wasn't Amherst in the same situation a while back?
They were a direct city.
Right, now, they're not a direct anymore either, right?
No, we don't have any direct cities.
So this hawkes right back to, on the federal level, of more and not more money.
Well, that's my concern. Are they going to give us a bigger shot of pie because we have a larger population base to cover?
No, our allocation is our allocation from the state.
Excellent. That's where I was trying to get, and I didn't mean to... I wasn't trying to grill you. It's just that, you know, the public doesn't really understand this. As Commissioner Lundey indicated, we kept getting more and more responsibility, more and more things that need to be accomplished with a less and less amount of money. So they seemingly give us, let's use just any number, $200,000. Well, gee, that $200,000 hasn't changed. Why... What's your problem? Well, it hasn't changed. You've just increased the amount of people we've got to serve exponentially.
Well, that's what I'm saying, Mace, you being that we're... Can you get back to us, I mean, it doesn't have to be out here, but what we got prior when we had the couple of direct cities and what we got for everyone else in the county versus what we're getting now in our allocation of funds, to see how much we've actually shrunk? We talked about the local government fund cuts statewide that we've taken a beating on, but what have the feds done in regards to these important services?
Yeah, and the CDBG, though, is filtered through the state.
Correct.
So, you know, everybody's got...
It may come from them too, then.
Everybody's got a little hand on this going forward, so we've got to keep putting the word out to the community here about diminishing resources. Even those resources don't look like they've been diminished at first glance.
Yeah, but if you add a population base of Amherst and North Ridgeville to a direct line, you're adding 50,000 people to the same pie that we have to find a way to serve. You know, thirty percent increase with the same amount of dollars. It just... And it sort of like gets bypassed in discussions because we still get the grant, but now we have to find a way to provide the service for a larger base, and it just doesn't work. More for less than ever happens. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your presentation, Linda.
For those cliches, people, the only thing you do with less, if you were doing your job...
Is less.
Is less.
Right. Go ahead, you can continue.
Oh, thanks. And when I say we are eligible for approximately $276,000, we have not received our allocation amount as yet. I've talked to the state, and they've said it'll probably be about $276, so don't hold me to that. With the set-aside grants, which are the neighborhood downtown revitalization, those are set-aside grants which you apply for, the county can apply for. In addition to the allocation program, those can go up to $300,000, okay? Another requirement of this grant is that we must conduct a Community Development Implementation Strategy Meeting, a CDIS meeting. This is new this year. We have in the past had CAS, Community Assessment Strategy Meetings, where we find out in the community what projects are out there, what shelf-ready projects there are. So when we go to apply for the grant, we know there are some projects. This year, we are having this SIDS meeting to explain the CDBG grant programs in depth, as well as facilitating communication with stakeholders and assisting with identifying and prioritizing potential funding opportunities. Invitations were sent out on March 3rd of this year, and they were mailed... I take that back. Invitations to the March 3rd meeting were mailed out on Wednesday, February 11th, to the stakeholders. The stakeholders are the townships, the villages, the eligible cities in Lorraine County, as well as Lorraine County agencies, the Health Department, Office on Aging, those type of agencies. At this time, I also sent out funding request applications, which I have done every year in February, to get a heads-up on any projects that are out there. There have been in the past years where we have the CDBG grant application. I send out funding requests, and no one has a project. It's because of the amount of money there is and the fact that the projects have to be tied to low-to-moderate income areas. And in Lorraine County, on the census, we do not have many that are LMI areas. The first public hearing is to provide citizens with pertinent information about the CDBG programs. CDBG program can fund a broad range of activities, which include economic development projects, street water supply, drainage and sanitary sewer improvements, park acquisition and improvements, demolition of unsafe residential and commercial structures, rehab of housing and neighborhood facilities. And all of these, as I said, all of these activities must benefit low-to-moderate income families, households.
Didn't you say there was some money for downtowns, though? Would that also be in low-to-moderate income areas?
There's different criteria, yes. There's job creation with some of these, so they all have different criteria that you must meet.
Didn't we work through the Main Street project in Amherst in regards to some of those facade improvements a few years back? It was the same dollars on the downtown revitalization.
And that is now called the set-aside, so if the Main Streets want to apply, they apply through the county, through us.
Okay. They've changed the rules the last couple of years. That's why I'm trying to get a heads-up.
Oh, yes, they have.
Because we've always had our SEDs that we have to do that's required, but now you've got a new one that's a similar...
Well, not only have they increased the numbers, they've also increased the amount of people that are eligible to apply for the funds.
Right.
The Main Street was a good one. It worked out well. Can you, for the folks that, the three people that tune in and do watch us, could you talk about a few of the projects that we've done over the years so they can see the type of work that's being done? Can you recall a few of those things?
Oh, sure. I can tell you, this year, we're doing Two Streets in Kipton. We're doing a sewer project in Carlisle Township. We're doing, as part of North Ridgeville's project that we are supplying them funds for, is sidewalks within a park area for ADA compliance. So those are three things that we've done.
And that's a big use of CDP funds, breaking down the barriers with the 504 ADA compliance. Those funds have been used quite extensively by townships and the smaller villages over the years.
Even though we've had complaints that we didn't encourage, or... Didn't we do a sidewalk project in Kipton also, remember, Mylander, a few years back also?
Yes, yes.
So he's getting two streets and sidewalks with a population of 700 people?
But he's getting his projects together, right?
Right, he's getting his projects together.
He is, and he has the LMI areas to do so.
Correct.
And that's a problem, because lots of times, folks will come in, and townships will come in, and they'll have a great project, but they don't qualify under the LMI.
Correct.
And so the census tracts just aren't there.
And even if the census tract does not designate an LMI area, you can do an income survey. So you can go on that street and knock on doors and ask where do they fall within their income.
And we tried to do that up in Avon Lake. Remember with the... What were they putting, the storm sewers up there, or the assessments up there? We were trying to... Everybody thinks that everybody who lives in Avon Lake are wealthy people.
No.
There's...
We did that in Amherst, too, on that Broadway-Taylor sewer, didn't we?
We did. We worked... I think it was Amherst Township.
Yeah, there was a water and sewer project.
There was a Clearview project that we tried to do those over there, but we couldn't offset enough of the dollars in regards to the railroad or utilities.
Rowing, the Dutton Road...
Dutton Road, Rhode Island Heights.
Where we did the...
We shelved those plans. We never did get...
We shelved those plans because we couldn't make it work financially, but I know we tried to use it on that also.
But we did use funds in Sheffield Township to build that fire station.
Yeah, and the bathroom, right?
We did now.
And the bathroom.
Bathroom.
Yeah, now I'm trying to figure out how to keep it from being underwater all the time, right, Bob?
Yeah, we're working on that.
Maybe there's a water and sewer grant for them.
Let's hope so.
Let's see. Another process that is different in this grant, that the applicants for the CDBG allocation programs are now to, are now required to apply online. We did this with the CHIP grant, and one of the things that has to be done is that the roles have to be identified as to who submits, who reviews, and the CEO, president of the board, will notarize and sign and approve all our roles. The training for this grant is on April 2nd in Columbus at the ODOT building there at 9:00 a.m. So we're doing all of this, but we have not yet had our training on this application, so it gets very interesting. The CDBG allocation application is due by electronic filing June 26th of this year. And the second public hearing will be held on May 6th at 9:45, and we'll discuss the specific activities that we've put together, and we'll look for approval to submit the grant at that time. And that's all I have.
A public comment? Or do we... Do you guys have any other comments?
We have no comments. Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Seeing none, do we close the public hearings? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Is there any regular public comment?
Anybody wishing to address the board today? Got any issue? No? Okay. Make a motion that we go into executive session as outlined by the administrator and assistant county prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.